Okay, I think we can go ahead and get our retreat started here this evening. Ms. Lowe's gonna be a little bit late, but we'll go ahead and get going. Do I have a motion to accept or modify our agenda for this evening?
No internet.
Well, mine went right on.
Oh, here it is. Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, no? Alright, great, thanks. First up, it looks like we're talking about the LFK construction.
Alright, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, I'm trying to get the board docs here so I can pull it up on this screen. Alright, so, wanted to cover a couple of things. Mr. Smith, he goes through a, basically, it's a meeting every two weeks, just a progress meeting, and they provide documents such as this to Mr. Smith and to the facilities. And I told him to make sure that he goes ahead and sends it to our facility committees, members. Would all the board members like to receive this update on a weekly base, or on a bi-weekly basis? It's just kind of a progress update on where they're at with the construction, as far as that goes. I know I definitely want to get it to the two facilities, but would everybody else like that or not? And I will just share this, I didn't, I'm sorry, I did not make an extra copy. I can see if, I can get copies made tonight to give you this one, but I will pass this one around, let you kind of scan over it to kind of see what it's about. But every two weeks, twice a month, is when they have that meeting. So there are a couple of things that I also wanted to talk to you about when it comes to the A and E of the contracts. So, one of the things that I want to talk about, first off, is the kitchen renovations. So if you remember, when we did the kitchen renovations, we pulled all that out because we thought we were going to pay for it out of child nutrition. So that was also the design, paying for the design, the A and E, all that stuff. Because we're, we moved to CEP, we would like to move this back over, basically, to the CARES, to the CARES funding. So, what happened was when we did the contract with Grimmon Parker, we didn't include that in the cost of the contract because we pushed it over here to the side because we didn't have a scope for what we wanted to do with the cafeteria. So that means how much, you know, what appliances we were going to purchase, what renovations we actually needed to do within the kitchen area. And so what they did was that they, they had an allowance not to exceed $37,455. What the cost of this actually is now is just $21,843 for the A and E for the kitchen area. And we have that in the CARES that we can move over, and instead of paying that out of child nutrition, we need, so, we would need the board at their next meeting to basically kind of look at this and say, okay, we want to move this to the CARES to pay for it out of the CARES funding, because that is one that goes away quicker. We don't want to use up our child nutrition because we're in CEP and we're having discussions if we want to try to continue CEP one more year, or two more years, because we're trying to protect that balance, because if we have a negative balance, it's going to need to offset it. So, I'll, I kind of skimmed over that, but I'll read what Buck has written here, and this would be something that you would, you know, I wanted just to discuss it with you to see if you had any questions about it, because it was removed from the original contract when we put all the kitchen stuff, because we thought we were going to pay for everything out of child nutrition. So it wasn't in that original contract, and so we'd have to modify our CARES application on the CARE side to include this additional. But, "The executed A and E contract with Grimmon Parker in the amount of $929,258.80 included the design development of the renovations for the entire school. At the time of the contract extension, staff did not have a defined scope as to the extent of the renovations needed for the kitchen. These costs were quoted in Grimmon Parker's fee proposal as an allowance with not to exceed cost of $37,455, and were not included in the contract. This cost was for the design if all kitchen equipment was to be replaced. Since food service is paying $258,000 for cafeteria appliances at the LFK project, funds for ESER grants were more desirable for two reasons. ESER grants have a timeline when they must be used, so we want to use this one that actually expires in September 23. The cafeteria funds acts to serve as our CEP initiative," so that's that cushion that I just talked about where every child eats free. So, the additional amount after meeting with the child nutrition provider, SEDEXO, the scope was defined, and the actual design cost for the kitchen renovations were $21,843. So it was less than what the allowance was that Grimmon Parker said, hey, as we push this over here to the side, we think it's going to be this amount, so it was actually $16,000, approximately $16,000 less. That is still there within our allowances, and we do have that to cover from the CARES. So I just want to see if there's any questions on this from you guys, or concerns that you may have.
Well, any purchases for the kitchen? Like, I don't know what they need, but just say they need a stove. Now what fund does that come in?
Child nutrition.
Child nutrition.
Yeah, so we are, we are purchasing $258,000 in appliances out of child nutrition.
And I think part of that was a freezer.
One of, yeah, part of that's a freezer. Usually those walk-in freezers run about $40,000 to $50,000, walk-ins. So.
Okay.
Yeah, but most of that is appliances is what they're taking.
Okay.
And, and that is something that is allowable in our CARES, because we did all the A and E for renovations.
Okay.
So it's something that is allowable. But we just have to make that change so that then Ms. Boyce can go in and make that modification on the grant application and get that submitted to the state.
And because it's CARES, we're not, and we'll be spending that money before the deadline to spend the money that way?
Correct.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got it now.
And it doesn't in any way put us over budget?
No, in fact, it probably brings us, helps getting us a little bit more under.
Well, actually, it's a cost that we pushed to the side, but if you remember, we had about 500 and some odd thousand in contingencies, but then you also had included in the total cost 800,000 for the wiring, which brought it down to 100,000. So you have that cushion of the 500 plus the 700, you know.
Oh yeah, but I don't want to use that.
Right.
Like, that's, the savings, it's only a savings if you don't spend it, so.
Right, right, right. But no, this was, this was one of those things that was pulled out to be, so it is within that limitation. They'll probably still come out of, you know, it's in the, it's in the ESER grant, so funding is available there.
Hey, Ms. Lowe.
Hi, Ms. Lowe, sorry everyone.
The next one.
We put you on a new committee that meets twice a week.
That's fair.
That's fair.
So this is something that would have to come out of, out of the contingency fund. And this is a requirement that we are required to do, that is outside of the scope of the architect, but it's a special inspection requirements. And so, this is the write-up on that. "The plans and specifications as developed by Grimmon Parker for the renovations at LFK calls for the owner, Warren County Public Schools, to be responsible for the coordination and cause for the special inspections required for the construction. This is standard practice in the industry and provides the opportunity to ensure that the general contractor is using appropriate construction materials and methods as part of renovations. The scope includes materials, testing, inspections for all five phases and renovations, and will include cast-in-place concrete for footings, the foundation, the slab, on-ground, on-grade concrete, along with load-bearing CMU wall construction, as well as structural steel framing and decking. The cost for that outside inspector is $24,007.80." Now, that does come out of the contingency, is how Buck has this listed here.
How did we not anticipate this expense?
Ah, that's, you know, that was one of the things I asked, they said that was just one of the things that, he said he just missed that going in down through there, just kind of like.
Grimmon Parker missed that?
So it was just one that we're now needing to do, so.
But Grimmon Parker missed that?
I'll have to check with Buck on that, I'm not sure where that, where that was missed. It was $24,007. But it's to make sure that they're doing their job. And, you know, if you have additional questions on this, I would just say, give Mr. Smith a call, and he, he and Mr. Levisake, and I think there's also a meeting, is it next week with Facilities?
Next week for the, yeah.
What the?
Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so Facilities Wednesday, so, yeah.
Do we have any update on the drain emissions from the plants?
So I'm going to talk about that one.
If that's coming up, okay.
Talk about that one, then we've got some, some things to show you, I have them marked on the, on the ground in there, so you can kind of see where it's at.
Okay.
So, just wanted to tell you about the special inspection that's required for us as well as for all.
That's basically all, all building inspections for this whole project.
Well, this, are the special inspections though, are those not done through the county? Are those extra inspections due to the CARES Act requirements through like, because the federal funding area things?
You know, I did not ask about that, but I don't think it's through the county.
I don't think it is.
It is a different, it's an outside inspector.
Okay.
It's an outside, yeah. It's an outside inspector that would come in to review the work done, to make sure that it's being done accordingly.
I'm just shocked that Grimmon Parker would overlook something like that, because I mean, these are not newbies here, so.
The inspector is under the stamp of a PE, and so they'll inspect, I think structural steel too should be on there.
So I will actually make note of that, and I can ask tomorrow. Okay, next one is the floor drains. So, when we look more into the floor drains, this is something that they did research. We didn't put floor drains in the renovation out of AS Rhodes, that was not done. Actually, the renovation in, I think it's Madison County, that is just like this school, they did not put floor drains in that one. Also wanted Albemarle, it's not a code requirement, so it's not.
It is code requirement.
It's not, it's been looked up and looked, it's not, it's not a code requirement. So, through research, floor drains are not required by code in single fixture toilet restrooms, so these are single fixture.
Single fixture, they're not, okay.
Right. And having floor drains in single fixture toilet restrooms is a matter of owner preference. We do not currently have floor drains in these areas at LFK, or with our recent renovation at AS Rhodes Elementary School. Other school divisions that were surveyed with recent new building and or renovation construction did not have drains in these single user bathrooms. Historically, our elementary restrooms have been, have not been an issue with water damage. So, you know, the plumbing is really good within our elementary schools. In order to protect our investment, you know, the thought is to maybe put a couple of floor drains outside, one outside the two single stall bathrooms out here, and then one outside two single stall bathrooms, just to make sure that, you know, if there is some type of flooding or something, we have a floor drain there. We don't have to do the floor drains, but it is an option. And the thing with this is that it would need to, they're about ready to pour concrete, and so it would be something that we would have to probably decide pretty quick if we want to put those floor drains in or not, because once they pour the concrete, then it's cut the concrete. Now, the cost to add 12 drains, 12 drains, would be $39,183.86.
That's double what the 20,000 that they told us at the last budget meeting was.
So that's what came back from the contractor.
Was that problem though?
Or that was?
That's one for every two. That seemed to.
The contractor.
The contractor.
Well, we're right at the beginning of this project, and there's going to be other things that get added on and extra charges as we go along, so.
Well, and, yeah, and these drains are, you know, it's not a necessity.
Right.
Is there at least one drain in the, is my understanding, you've got your sink, you've got your communal area, and then you've got the two toilet rooms off of it, is there at least a drain at the, at the communal sink area?
I would have to look, I cannot recall.
Okay.
I can, you know, check with Mr. Smith to find out.
I would think we would want the drain where the toilets are in case they get stopped up, a sink doesn't really cause too much of a problem.
Well, he's talking about putting them outside of the.
Yeah, they're outside, they would be outside the door.
So it'd all still be wet room space though? Like, I would assume, I mean, at least in, in public restrooms, it's, it is a code requirement to have at least one drain. Now, doing this whole single stall thing does change things, but does that mean that there's no drain at all in that entire wet room space? Or, because I mean, the toilets are overflowing, it's coming out, there's somewhere for it to go.
You would think that there would be, but I can check on that and find out. I just didn't ask if there was any other drains outside, around the water fountain or anything of that nature.
Okay.
So.
When's the deadline for that decision if they're getting, we don't want to hold that up?
I have to check with Mr. Smith.
Okay.
But I think they're getting close to ready to do one thing or the other. You know, did I, and when I walked out there and looked, what you guys will see, there is involved some concrete cutting steel, because it would go out into existing concrete. Even, because if you remember when you walked through that last time, you weren't here. When you walked through, they had that big cutout. The drains are actually outside of that cutout, so there would still need to be concrete cut to put the drain in that would be outside the double bathroom.
From the existing concrete.
Mm-hmm. So there's some additional concrete cutting that looks like it would have to go. I asked Greg to come over and to paint it all out so that you guys can see that, if you would like to see that, so that you have an idea of where you're at on that.
We really need to know the time limit for the decision because we don't meet for two more weeks, and if they're moving right along, this is some great weather for concreting right now. So, you know, and we have a meeting next week, they might ask us at that meeting to proceed with that or not, so we got to know something.
Yeah, let me check with Buck on that.
Well, what is this, $104,000 though? It says, "Add floor drains to all toilet rooms at $104,000. Owner asks for price only doing two floor drains in each classroom pod. Revised plan $39,000." Okay, owner to discuss this for a break, okay. And then, so the testing inspections, are those, those are being put out to bid, it looks like, so we don't even have the proposals on that, and it's for asbestos remediation? Inspections, that's what that's for, so it's not, it's not.
For the inspections?
Testing inspections, owner mentioned doing asbestos remediation and floor tile in classroom pods at one time for both phases three and four, would have exposed slat in phase four for semester. Need to confirm plans to school at later date. Owner looking at contracting for special inspections, whether they can hire or need to do public bidding. Owner has a few proposals coming in for contracting special inspections, first needed would be testing the concrete mix.
Yeah, I, as far as the, I'd have to check with Greg Levisake on that, so I'm not sure if there is asbestos in any of the flooring, I mean, Greg would have the records of that. I do know that some of our locations, you know, there are.
Because of the age of them.
Because of the age of them.
Right, and they're encapsulated, it's not a big deal, but.
And a lot of times you don't know until you test it, and then see if you have an issue or not. And a lot of times you don't want to pop that, pop that up until you're ready to do something.
Well, you can tell by the size of the floor tile whether it's asbestos or not.
Unless it's the mastiff.
What other good news you got?
I think that's kind of everything I wanted to cover, oh, I do have this. So, they are moving pretty quick, I think, you know, they're a little bit ahead of schedule, so I did want to provide everybody a couple, a copy of this. This is just the phase progress sheet, and actually, if you just don't mind taking one and passing it around there, that basically, as you look, it'll give you the date of when things are going to be done, so when it gets to blue, that means they've completed that. And so this is, as of the last meeting last week, when Mr. Buck just went to that one, just kind of where they're at. I know when we had our meeting a couple weeks ago with Facilities, with the Facilities, we had, they were kind of ahead of schedule. They were ahead of schedule a little bit, they, oh. So I just wanted to kind of give you this, this is good for you to have, just to kind of see what was going to happen at what point.
And Mr. Smith is sending us one of these?
Yes, I can have him send you that. That's why I wanted to ask, if you guys, I know, I told him when he said, hey, that can send that, I said, specifically send it to our Facilities Committee, and I'll ask the rest of the board if they want one as well. So actually, since Dr. Finn said that yes, then I will go ahead and have him just forward that out to everybody, when he has it every two, two weeks, so that you guys get that update.
If this line is at January 24th, why are you saying we're ahead? Am I reading this right?
Well, he said this was back when he had a meeting.
Okay, so this isn't like.
This was at our last building.
Yeah, this was, yeah. This was the last one that he had an update on. And that was the date, and he told me to mention that, and I'm sorry, I forgot to.
So presumably, we've done these next few things too?
Yeah, so as we, we move in, you know, we're already at February 13th, so we should be getting a lot of these other, other things done. Alright, so there's nothing else as far as in the packet here, so what I did want to do was just go out here and walk through, that way you can see what we've done. I will allow the press to go through, but I am going to ask that you, you know, watch where you're at, it is a construction site. And maybe in the future, what we can do is set up a time for press to come out as we do another progress at some point, and do, you know, a tour of that progress, so.
So this was the pre-K wing, is where we're at.
And if you remember, that's when we walked down the hallway, that's where they closed it off so the students don't have access to it. And just go free to walk down, whatever you want to walk around, look at what they're doing, they were a couple of bathrooms, they're doing. You can see that they ducked, ducked workup, I don't know if they had the units in the last time we were here.
I don't know.
Yeah, they didn't.
The door jambs were not in last time, so they're making that way to that.
Framing it up.
What classroom is there?
This is Pathways and Connections, which is our tier three classroom for our higher need special education students. And it's part of where that restroom is used for as well.
But usually the pre-K, I think those two are over there where the.
Correct, yes.
So. I don't think we can walk through that, but. Getting all the time to do it all drops in.
So as soon as this is finished, at the end of the school, your third grade will move in here, and this will be their permanent home. There are four.
So you can see, if you want to look where those floor drains are supposed to go, Mr. Levisake painted it on the concrete.
So it's for this, so are these being, are many bathrooms that are being considered for the floor drains, like the little ones that were shared, like over by pre-K, you wouldn't be, through you doing?
I don't know, I know they're doing some other bathrooms, I can't go over here, but I don't know, I know there's 12. All I did, all I know is 12, I didn't, I didn't ask which bathroom. I let Greg and Buck work through that. But, yeah, so you would have to send it all back, one here, one here, and then.
So there's only like a whiteboard area and like a common teaching area, if you will, so small groups and beds like that.
Do they have a sink out here?
Correct, yes, the sink is outside of the restroom.
Outside, yes.
Not the case for all of the rest of the.
Correct. I mean, is it like, do they have like an art sink, like can they do projects?
There, there's, yeah, sure. I'd say it's pretty accessible.
Are there like, is that a walkway to get to the room from room, is that a door like there and over here?
This should be.
I mean, on the inside, on the left?
There shouldn't, you're not going to be able to walk from like one room to the next, no. You have to come out here. Correct, yeah, you have to go to this little common area.
So they're set up similar to how the pods were, right?
Correct, but walls. Exactly, you got it.
Every other classroom will have a door or a window, as you can see, so it's kind of closed in. This is where we'll have, I guess casework will be along this wall here, this is going to be our activity center.
Common area.
Common area of the pod. And I think the skylights are going somewhere in here. So we'll have, we'll have skylights.
Some natural lighting in here, that would be nice.
Well, I wanted, I wanted a huge skylight.
It'd be nice at that room, because we don't have a window, but.
Now, the other thing, you know, they'll have a door over there that, that shares in between each of the, each of the rooms, so.
Yeah, that's why I was.
Yeah, it's a light one.
But I really like how they set these back in each of the corners.
What's the, so the concept of what we've done here in the school is we've taken an open concept where they had pods, and basically, and we're converting it into classrooms that are like condensed, like this group where we're in today, this is going to have this common area, so instead of having one big room, we're going to have four or five traditional classrooms, is that the concept that we're having?
That is correct, so, as, as you're aware, most of the funding for this is coming from our CARES grant.
Right.
Due to the pandemic, we can actually go and look at an open pod classroom, and so you can see that with the old antiquated system, that in those corners, you can see where the, it was all just air and shared, everything was shared. So if you had a flu outbreak and somebody in this area, it would definitely.
It went everywhere, right.
Yeah, but now, as you can see, the individual air units and the individual units for each pod.
See that, right.
Will isolate that classroom. And so that's why we're able to use our grant funding to do this renovation.
Right.
Because we are making those individual classrooms.
Well, I can also remember the days when I substituted at the schools, and all of a sudden, all these classrooms are kind of like open, and people just walking through everywhere, and there's a lot of disruption.
Yes, sir.
So I think this would be a little better.
Oh, it would be, yes, yeah. And then still have that collaboration area.
Right, I like, I like that concept here, we're looking at here, where you have the bathrooms out here, so they're not traipsing all over the building, so it's still, they're all controlled, and then they can share ideas and work together, right?
Yes, sir.
It's sort of like a plan. Will be interesting to see what it looks like in a couple months, it'll look a lot different.
Yes, we're expecting to have school, students start classes in here, starting in August.
Now, and then so.
In this pod.
So this pod's here will be open in August, so then we'll start on the other side of the school.
We will start on the other, so, so over the summer, we're going to start in the cafeteria and doing some of the things down in that area. And we'll also start on some other pods, and then as that pod gets done, we will move the classroom into that pod.
Takes a little longer to get things done like that, but you can't stop, where you can.
Well, and, and they're moving right along with this project, so they're making good progress.
Yeah, I'm surprised, I can remember we were just talking about it not that long ago, that's great, that's great. Well, keep up the good work.
Alright, thank you, sir.
Okay, so the next thing, are we ready to move on to the next?
I think so, thank you.
Alright. So, this was one thing that I've been working on for the past couple of years, as far as looking at art logos, just, just as far as for our school division for changing our logo, that was one of the previous, some, previous board had mentioned, hey, we want to do, want to look at a different logo, so put that together. We, I worked with Ms. Petty, and she worked with the art teachers in the county, and pushed it out to individuals that they could submit art designs or logo designs, and so they narrowed those down to about five or six. And so they narrowed that, those down to about five or six. And wanted to kind of just talk about the logos themselves and kind of the next process that maybe the board would like to go with. You know, is this something that you would like to make the final decision on? Or is it something that you want to put, pick a couple and say, hey, we want to throw these out to the community and let our community vote on a new logo? But I just wanted to lay these out, and I will try to do the best I can, so that-
They're all students.
There is one teacher.
Okay, cool.
There was one teacher design. And we did have a committee of teachers, administrators, and parents come in and look and rank all of the logos. And, yeah, that one, that one is neat, yes. And this one kind of goes with our current. Because our current one is a book. Now, this one is a teacher submission, and that is actually a book with the county's logo. And then, so, so these, some were simple. But we wanted to let you guys, I don't know, I can swing them around here in a minute, let you guys look at them. But these were the five that, that the committees, they went through and, and just kind of ranked them and selected these five to bring to let you guys look at and-
How many were submitted?
Oh goodness, I don't know. I know they had, we were up there in that conference room, and they were all spread out around the page.
So there was a lot of interest then.
I like the idea of sharing it out to the community and just show them kind of what the options are.
So are there any things, you know, within these logos that you kind of like, or that you would kind of like us to maybe change a little?
I like the ones, the mountains and the north and south fork, because it's here, it's more mountain.
I really like that one. I think that kind of, yeah.
I like that one too.
And I like this one as well, because you're either-
They're all-
Yeah, they're all great, they're all great, yes. And I like this one with the simplicity of it as well. I love them all.
Those two are, I also like, but they're kind of, there's a lot there. Like, I'm, I'm looking at this logo here, and it's like half an inch by half an inch, like, would you see it?
The kind of detail.
Yeah, I want it to be seen here. I mean, it's not always going to be big.
Right. And a lot of that would have to be taken to, to a graphic designer to, to look at that. You know, like with this one, we would probably need a little more blue if we're going to have both of our high schools represented, because eventually-
That was the only thing I was thinking there, because I see, that, I see, what I see is maroon and holo.
Yeah, yeah, you would have to integrate, you know, a blue, a blue sky or something. Well, you do have the green, because I guess the skyline is green. So you have the green and the maroon, so I guess they did kind of implement those colors there. So is there a couple that you, that you kind of would like to say, okay, yes, we'll send on? Because one of the things I was going to do is that for students, I was going to give first place student a $500 scholarship and second place a $250. So if there's a couple that, and again, I believe this is the only one that is not student work. These others were student work. Or would you want to just throw all five of them out, or to the community and say, help us in choosing our next logo?
Maybe we picked it top three.
To narrow down options. Yeah, five is a lot, five is a lot.
I think three's a good number.
Yes, ma'am.
What are the, like, do you all recognize these plants here?
I was wondering the same thing. What's the symbolism of that? I don't know.
Because I, I like the, the nature in the apple for the school, like, maybe like a little-
I feel like I mean something, but I don't know.
Yeah, I think on the county one, it's got something like land of plenty or something. You know, in relation to like a small grain or something. Yeah, I kind of like that number sixteen there.
And would that refer more to like the, like, I guess, history of, I guess, this area of apple orchards in the past?
What?
With the apple orchards.
Oh, yeah.
I was thinking apple for the school, but yeah, yeah.
I was seeing apple for the school, too.
That sun maybe like, that's my knowledge, I can see.
Put a big old steer on it.
Yeah, it's not really.
This is nice, but this is really busy.
Yeah, maybe.
You can suggest they also come a new logo.
I want the mountains.
One's three.
Uh, on the left there, twenty-three, sixteen and eight.
Twenty-three, sixteen and eight.
I like eight and twenty-three for sure. I think this could be like some kind of mesh together, depending on what the logo looks like.
That's true. Take that. Yeah, take that and put it on top of the book.
Can we make our own logo?
Can we mesh the artist together?
Well, I mean, we could probably, you know, you could probably, you know, if you wanted to pull some pieces together, I mean, probably make that happen. I would have to share between the two people on the, on, on.
And so the student, so a teacher and a student could collaborate together.
This has a, a name, and it's got Warren County Middle School, so was this done by a middle school kid?
No, so that is a, so this is a- This is a teacher when these are all-
Oh, she's at Warren, okay.
Gotcha.
I like how that one on eight went all the way to the edge of the circle. I think that's kind of interesting. Instead of staying in the center.
It did fill out the, the full design there, yeah. So we had the, you know, Ms. Hope took this to the art teachers in August and let them work on it. And she collected sometime in January, and then they just recently had that up at central office to, to bring these five to you guys to kind of look at and see, yay, we like these, or maybe want to do something else. But I think we have some good options here.
Is anybody else thinking?
So so far, we have a twenty-three, a sixteen, and an eight, right?
I just, I don't know.
And we have a twenty-three and an eight, and-
I'm a twenty-three and thirteen.
So we have a twenty-three, thirteen.
I'm an eight and a twenty-three, except maybe a twenty-three slash thirteen combined.
I do like that idea of the possibility of a twenty-three slash thirteen combined, yeah.
I like the idea of having a teacher and a student collaborate together too. And I really like having a little hawk and a wildcat.
I mean, I like that together, too, because it has both our mascots.
Yeah, it was interesting, because the committee said, is there a way for us to put all of our mascots somewhere? In kind of the background, but that would get a little busy. It did get a little busy, but, you know.
And then what if we do build a new school, like?
Right, right, then you have to, but everybody will be either a wildcat or a hawk.
I think as far as if we're, our ultimate goal is to get three or some number out in the community, it would be good to have, like, we have two really good options of, okay, we're going full mascot, or we're going more-
Yeah, there's different scenic type options.
Yeah, I think that, I agree. And yeah, in the community, yeah, because you can go full, full school or full county school kind of thing.
What do you think, Mr. Rinaldi?
I like number sixteen. Because it, it's kind of like, you have all these schools, and they all have all their mascots and their colors and all of that, which is great. And then the school administration or the school board is over top of all the schools. So it's like, I don't know. I can't, I go to a restaurant, and I can't make my mind up, so you're asking me about five different ones.
So what about, like, I keep hearing eight, sixteen, and then maybe a collaboration of twenty-three and thirteen?
Could that be the three?
Like, could that be the three that go to the county?
Right, so it's literally-
Um, yeah, I mean-
Like, could they maybe collaborate twenty-three and thirteen?
Yeah, I, I don't think they can.
Just for their, mm-hmm.
Yeah. So, so what I'm hearing is eight, sixteen, twenty-three, and thirteen, maybe a combination of twenty-three, thirteen. Okay. Alright, and then, once we get those, I guess I can bring that back, let you guys kind of look at a collaboration between twenty-three and thirteen. And, or just, well, we'd have to have that put together before we sent it out.
Right, sure.
But I guess the board would like to just let the community vote on, on the final logo, or?
What if we said you're a finalist, twenty-three and thirteen, go back and collaborate together. Eight, go back and draw in some more blue or whatever the suggestion is for that, and-
Sixteen, explain to us all the, what's going on there.
What their meaning is.
It's not like they all have a little bit of-
I don't think it needs to have this on here.
Yeah, I think we could, yeah, I would agree.
Because I was kind of confused about the, the school, it's, because it's not our county, it can't count.
Yeah, the school division. I don't know that that needs to be on there.
But you could take that out, put it on the book, and, yeah. But whoever's split, the opposite direction. Yeah, just like run a little spine.
I don't know how you would combine the simple mountains with this if this is the county logo. But I'm not an artist, so maybe they know how to do it.
Well, we just, maybe we wouldn't have the county.
Doesn't necessarily have to have a county, maybe it's-
So then it would be spirit of the county logo, but-
With interpretation.
But, yeah, or, you know, like you were saying, could see it smaller and-
Just kind of taking that piece and putting on the book.
Can they do like an overlay where they could overlay one on top of the other to show it, kind of a combination of?
I think that teacher and student are going to work together, they're going to figure that out.
Let the artists do it.
Yeah.
How are you going to do the votes? Is it going to be like, everybody just votes as many times as you want?
So, so no, I think what we would do is that, that, you know, we would need to collect. If you do a Google, if you do a Google form, then you can collect-
Make sure that each only do once, so you can log in.
Yeah, just, just make sure they log in, and you can collect and compare that to their email address, so that you don't see multiple email addresses.
So then it would just be students voting, right?
Well, no, you send that out to the parents, you could, because probably each parent would have, have an email.
Well, I think students should be allowed to vote on this too.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
They could vote right in school.
Yeah, for them, maybe just-
In-person voting. In-person voting.
In-person voting, absolutely.
Alright, so I have that down, so maybe look at twenty-three and thirteen combined, how we can do that. Eight, a little more blue up there that you like. Sixteen, you kind of want more of an explanation on. Okay, alright.
So certainly, just some nice samples.
Those all look great.
Alright. Next one up is-
The same one thing. So with these legislative priorities, I guess the first question that we have to start getting about is, are we going to stay in the V S B A? Are we going, if we're going to stay in the V S B A, am I going to see this, this through? Can we, if I rewrite these legislative positions, and then somebody else becomes delegate, you're the one going to be presenting it to, to the delegate assembly? But, um, did you, did you guys ever get a book?
I don't think I have a red one. I have the green one.
I have a green one, but I'm not the red one.
That's my list of complaints with the V S B A. So, um, the ones that I identified in this new book as being priorities that I would like to see changed, and then obviously give me your feedback as far as, like, do you want me to dive in and write the legislative position changes, send them out? We would have to then vote on them. The V S B A has still not given an actual specific date that we would have to have those turned in by. They just give a vague, like, March or April kind of a deadline. And then, of course, from there, they would be submitted to their legislative priorities board. We may not, we might not even make it past the, the first round. But, um, the first one is the V S B A opposes federal or state efforts to mandate school choice. They're against tuition tax credits. So there were, in this round of general assembly votes, there were a lot of different school choice measures up for vote. Tax credits for parents, similar to like a five-twenty-nine plan, where if you are using private school or homeschooling, you can donate from your own funds pre-tax into an account, which can then be used on approved schooling expenses. Everything is getting shot down. Literally, every single one has been, has been killed or it's going to be killed. Because the V S B A is there lobbying, speaking against all of these things. So I would like to see that switched to, at the very least, in neutral stance. I highly doubt that I'm going to get the V S B A to actually lobby for any type of school choice or tax incentives. But at the very least, if we could just get them to back off and just let it, just let it proceed how it's going to proceed, instead of trying to influence one or the other, that would be a step in the right direction. I guess, before I go further on that, what are your thoughts on, on that one?
What does it say again, like the, the?
Um, well, it's a pretty long-
Like, is there one statement that just says, like, because obviously, we haven't gotten a rip, but-
Yeah, so I've, I've highlighted the V S B A opposes federal or state efforts to mandate school choice.
That's what I was looking for.
Including efforts to divert or condition funding from existing federal and state programs. The V S B A supports any plan allowing public, private, or homeschooled students access to schools or school programs. I like that part, that's great. Warren County obviously has a great relationship with homeschoolers and allowing, you know, like hybrid schooling and all that. It goes on to say, private and homeschools have no direct accountability to taxpayers for their use of tax revenues. Well, first of all, our taxes are still paying into the system. Secondly, there, there are two different types of homeschoolers, for one thing. There is religious exemption, in which case there is no yearly update. Or then there is the homeschooling type like I do, which I am very much accountable. I have to test at the end of the year, I have to show proof of progress, you know, whether it's testing or evaluations or what have you. So I do have accountability there. And then obviously, private schools have accountability as well. Let's see, it goes on to say, with vouchers and tuition tax credits, private and homeschools would have an advantage in competition with public schools, because they can be selective in admissions and can refuse to provide services in public schools by law must provide. First of all, I think competition's a good thing and makes everybody, you know, rise. But it's, I don't know, I don't view it as competition so much as, I don't view myself, for instance, competing with public schools. I look at what my children's needs are every single year, and we're going to go in whichever direction best fulfills the need of the student. And I think that is really the, the generalized spirit of why we have public education in the first place, is that as a society, we recognize that education is important, and we're willing to work together to make sure our children are educated, so that we have that next generation to then take care of us. So to me, I see it as a matter of, the goal is to educate children. So we're either willing to help that happen, or we're not. And it's not, I wouldn't, I guess, the way, the best way to think of it is, I pay taxes into the public school system, just like everybody else does. But then on top of that, I have to use my post-tax income to then- But then on top of that, I have to use my post-tax income to then provide schooling on top of that. So at the very least, it would be nice to have the option to have pre-tax income used for education. And the way that this is currently written completely prohibits that. So, did that make better sense?
What, can you say again what they said about, like, which part of it makes it so that what you're describing, like the five-two-nine type of thing, wouldn't be part of it? Because I, I mean, just, I'm just thinking pragmatically, like you said, like, what would they ever agree to? I can't imagine they would agree to take out something that says they're opposed to, you know, funds being diverted from schools or something. But what you're describing, maybe could be on the table, I mean, that seems to me not against what I'm thinking of. But what did they say, like, what did they say that includes that part that you're talking about? Because I would think that might be where we want to focus.
With vouchers and tuition tax credits, so they see that as.
Take out tuition tax credits, maybe.
Yeah, and I mean, I can certainly play around with the wording on it.
You were talking about the five-two-nine, though, because that's been voted down. Like, the V S B A, and you just tied it with V S B A because they're lobbying against all of it in general. There's not anything directly here that says that, I think is what.
So this book directs their lobbying efforts. And so when they are down in front of the general assembly, and they're in their session, they stand up and they say, you know, per V S B A legislative position seven point zero, the V S B A stands against this. And they represent as a whole that this is what all the school boards of Virginia are against. And with the changes and progress coming to schools and schooling in general, there were a lot of different bills put up that will tweak this in little ways. Some of them that were put up, for instance, had even an income limit. And so you could only do, like, pre-tax savings for people who were, like, below the poverty line. And what I keep coming back to, in my mind, is during COVID, when there were so many kids who were at home and having to be forced to homeschool, I met with so many different moms who were, like, I would see the Facebook posts, and they'd be overwhelmed, and I'd invite them to come over and sit on my screen porch and look through my curriculum and, like, show you what works for me, maybe this one, that one. And a lot of the parents were happy to do it. There were moms who were just, cried and did not want to be doing this. And I realize just how privileged I am that I can afford to do this. And when I'm meeting with parents who both work, or they are not as financially privileged to have the extra funds to purchase the curriculums and, you know, hire a private tutor if they needed to, it's not fair. So, the only way we're gonna get to that type of fairness is if we, if we just have the V S B A back off a little bit on some of this stuff. Some of the other bills that were put up involved actually parents being able to use pre-tax money for just for tutors, to hire a private tutor. They're still in the public school system, they just want to hire a tutor. And even that was shot down, so.
I think it might be worth asking them to rewrite it just a little bit more narrowly, like, instead of being just like everything under the sun. Be a little bit more clear. I think that might be worth it, what do you guys think? I want to speak carefully.
No, I agree with that. I think there should be some area that you could get them to budge on, or at least throw out there. We're not, well, we're not okay with all of these things. I agree with you that, you know, certainly we're not gonna get them to be on our side.
Right, and they're not gonna lobby in favor. Right, they're not gonna lobby in favor of it, but in certain aspects, just, can you just stop fighting it?
Give a little bit, yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, well, let the elected officials come up with, you know, something that they believe is workable.
Right, because there's a reason why all of these delegates have written these proposals, is because that's what their constituents are telling them that they want.
Getting them to back off a little bit gives the legislators time to work within their groups to get something that is, is workable. So, the only thing that I'm concerned about, and there's so much, that there's a lot of unknown on how a lot of this is gonna work. We monitor birth rates, so that we know how many kids are gonna come into the school system six years from now or so. And it's like, if there's a big swing to go into the homeschool and private school, and we're looking at birth rates, and we gotta get geared up for so many kids, there could be a possibility where we get overgeared up. Because, and then our student population's not what we think it is, that concerns me a little bit. I have no problem with the homeschooling and the private school stuff. It's just that, how do we run our business of education when we're trying to project how many kids are gonna be coming in? And if we miss it, if we say, okay, we're gonna get, you know, eight hundred kids, and four hundred show up, we've overgeared our production for that. And then if it goes the other way, we're not prepared for that group coming in. That's what worries me the most, so.
I think we're gonna see that either way, though. I think we're gonna see that either way.
That's a possibility, but how do we, you know, how do we react as the managers of the school system? In business, you project how much sales you're gonna have. And usually, that's a pretty good estimate of what happens, but this is kind of an unknown for us.
Well, I think it'll be different for each locality too, and it's just my own guessing.
No, I would agree with that.
Dr. Ballinger's been great with the willingness to work with and include the homeschooling community. I foresee, like, this whole schooling kumbaya moment where eventually everybody just kind of comes together and we all just, you know, have our little educational buffet of whatever works best.
Somebody brought up the chemistry labs, you know, some time ago, that was brought up at one of our meetings. And so some sharing, and then something was brought up with special education that we provide some funds for that, or.
Even if they don't attend our schools, yeah.
Um, let's see.
I guess what I'm saying is I'm open.
They have not given us an official date yet. So what I figured I would do is, I kind of painted with a broad brush right now, wanted to gauge your interest before I, you know, invest the time in rewriting the stuff. And then from there, once it's rewritten, I can, you know, email it out and kind of work session it or tweak it or whatever and go from there, so. The next one is the seven point two compulsory attendance requirement. The V S B A supports amending the Code of Virginia to affirm that annual certification is required by the student and their parents for religious exemption. So this goes back to different types of homeschooling, you've got the religiously exempt homeschoolers. So the V S B A is actively lobbying to have that. Right now, when you send in your notice of intent, your religious exemption, it's one and done. If you change your religion and you, or whatever, and you want to come back, then you cross that bridge, you come to it, but it's not a, you have to.
They want it to be every year.
They want it to be a religious tribunal, where not only the parent has to certify this, but that also the child has to certify this. And that, to me, treads on two of the most sacred rights that we have in this country. Obviously, the parent-child relationship, I think, is a sacred one. And then your right to freedom of religion is the next sacred one. And the thought that any child would ever have to.
Like, regardless of their age, like a kindergarten or what have to?
There are places, and it does not happen here, but there are places where the child has to go in and sit face-to-face with the school board and profess their religion, which that treads on a slippery slope in and of itself. Because what if you've got like a, you know, thirteen-year-old going through that little rebellion state, and all of a sudden, they don't want to be parents' religion anymore? It's, I would like to see this section here nixed completely. So, this used to be, I think it's seven point three in this book. Yeah, so it used, so this section here used to be, it used to be seven point three. Seven point two used to be that the V S B A was going to lobby against the T E V O bill. And at the last delegate assembly, you know, they just removed that section altogether, it was antiquated, it's just, it's gone now. So what I would like to do is have seven point two removed altogether.
So wait, can you say it again? What did they say last, was this in there last year?
It stayed the same, right, the verbiage of this.
Was in last year?
Was in last year, but it was labeled as seven point three. Because last year, seven point two was to oppose the, yeah, the T E V O bill.
So just change the numbers.
So when they removed seven point two, then, you know, fell down one. But, point being is, we can remove sections altogether. So I would just like this whole religious tribunal thing, like, removed altogether, just take it out.
I'm on board with that.
And we don't currently do that, right? I mean, they submit there, right now they just submit it, and then it's.
So what really and truly happens is when a parent submits the religious exemption, it is put on as a consent agenda item, because you, as the board, are basically releasing that child from the compulsory school attendance law. And so, once you release that child, then there's nothing else to.
For the rest of their education, though, the way it stands right now. And so, they obviously had the same thing last year, but nothing came of it. Like, so for this, they just keep this on here because they keep trying, they keep lobbying for it.
In northern Virginia, we, they do not have the smooth sailing religious exemption that we have here. It is, it is getting tighter and tighter every year. So, and there is a definite push to, the child has to affirm.
I don't have a problem with it. When they say, like, they want it to be in Virginia code, is that already what they're doing in northern Virginia? Like, are they already making people do it every year? Like, can counties be more stringent than they want to?
So they can, so you can, you know, county, school divisions can say, we need this, 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 and this. Because there is that section in the code that, for you to release somebody from compulsory school attendance.
Do they do it every year already?
No, not every year, because once you release from compulsory school attendance, then you're done.
But they could come back.
They could come back to school.
Sure, okay.
Yes, if they would enroll, then, and then if they wanted to go back to, you know, religious exemption, then you would have to release that individual.
Yeah, I'm not real happy with the child coming in front of us to do that. I mean, I think that's a parental issue there, between the parent and the child. Why do we want to get involved?
And there, you know, divisions do it differently. I think we just require the parent to write a letter stating and affirming, you know, their religious values. I do know there's some school divisions that they require the parent to write the letter, and then they need three letters of support from people, from a pastor, somebody within their congregation, to support them. And so, divisions do it a little differently, as far as that is concerned.
And one of the issues that's raised there is an organization like H S L D A, which is Homeschool Legal Defense, and then HEAVE, Home Educators, I can never remember what it stands for. But there are divisions who exceed what the legal, they exceed their legal rights and what they're asking for. And then, the parents in the know who belong to H S L D A, well, they end up with an attorney, and they end up in there, and it's a fight and whatnot. And I just don't see the need for that.
Well, that's why I was asking, because the V S B A's whole thing is, you know, each county, each school division should get to choose. And so I was thinking, if they can already do that, then that would be very hypocritical to even be in there, that'd be a good argument to take it out. But it sounds like that's not quite there.
Well, but they're trying, but they're trying to amend the code, but.
Right, well, I'm saying, they're trying to, if they did that, it would force us all to do something. But also, right now, we're all prohibited from doing that if we wanted to. So it wouldn't, I don't know, that you could argue that it went either way on that particular rule of the V S B A. Neither one has more local choice than the other.
Yeah, it's another one, maybe we should just keep their mouth shut on, just, you know, just stay out of it. Stay out of parents' religious choice.
I'm okay with that being removed completely.
Okay. Um, okay, so next was ten point five, which is counseling. The part that I had highlighted says, and to require that parents opt in, their child would likely prove unworkable in these situations. Sorry, I should rewind a little bit. In extreme cases, the teacher or counselor is the only adult a student can confide in or look to for assistance. And to require that parents opt in, their child, their children would likely prove unworkable in these situations. Counselors must be able to respond in crisis situations by immediately dealing with the student, and if deemed appropriate in the counselor's professional judgment by providing follow-up contact and involvement with family. The added paperwork bureaucracy and records keeping associated with an opt-in system of counseling would divert limited school board resources, including funding and personnel that are better directed towards educational needs. The V S B A supports the current opt-out system and opposes legislation that would mandate an opt-in system of school counseling. I think this is one that we may differ on as a board. I am an opt-in person, I'm a informed consent person, not so much a must-know to opt out. Obviously, there's emergency situations, a child, you know, confides, you're a mandatory reporter. But what this is really dealing more with is that the child is receiving ongoing counseling without then the parent being given the option to opt in versus opt out. Which, this is the one that treads towards some of the other issues, like with Sage's bill that has been put forward. This is what opens the door for things like gender counseling without parental knowledge or consent.
See, with this one, I do think out is better. And the reason why is because I think about those students whose parents are not paying attention, that may need counseling for whatever it is. And I just think about, you know, preventing them from being able to get that help because their parent isn't dialed in. And I think for the parents that are dialed in and have an opinion, opt out is sufficient. Like, if, you know, as long as we're doing our due diligence and telling them what it is, and making the form available, and not trying to hide it, I think that's, to me, that's the more fair thing for the students that don't have involved parents. We're still letting the involved parents pick what they want to pick and have that outcome they want, but we're not preventing those kids who may need it the most from getting assistance.
Because if you do the opt-in, I understand where you're coming from with very specific issues, but that also is gonna rule out those kids getting some of their counseling that they need just for social activities and maybe even some of their educational work that they need to work through too. I think about all the messages I got last year in kindergarten about reminders, you know, check your kid's green folder. Like, there's stuff from August, and it's November, and parents haven't looked at it yet. And we got those quite a few times, and so, you know, that's just, that's homework and classwork. So, there's just parents that, I don't know, those kids will slip through their cracks, I'm afraid.
Well, I know in sending out, like, permission slips for, we used to do roller skating at Warranton Middle, and we always had permission slips that went out. It wasn't a money issue, because we had a pretty good fund for anybody who wanted to skate that didn't have the money, we took care of it. So that wasn't an issue. But you, you would be surprised, it's like pulling teeth sometimes just to get a simple permission slip in.
So, in this situation, I'm trying to, so there's the opt-out form that we have. So let's say we have a situation where the child has opted out, or the parent has opted out, for the child to, like, not participate. But let's say then, three months into school, there's a crisis situation that's happening, you know, the administration pulls the counselors in, they realize that the parent has previously opted out. Then that means before that counselor talks to that child or anything, they're gonna have to contact the parent to.
That's right.
To do anything. So, like, because, I mean, I, like, and I guess, like, yeah, I wouldn't want to put a student in with a counselor for counseling unless we have. wouldn't want to put a student in with a counselor for counseling unless we have parental approval. You know, even in an emergency situation, because we can give support without direct counseling. But, I do understand having that parental, you know, I'm just trying to process different situations that I know, like, like, or if the counselor wants to do, um, a six-week group for kiddos who may be, like, incarcerated parents, that happens a lot in school systems, you know. So they would send out an extra, hey, can your child participate in this? And the parents need to have permission for their child to participate in those groups. I think that's.
We do already opt in for that, don't we? I think that they.
Because that would be above and beyond.
There are some that are opt in, and then there are some that are, that are opt out.
I mean, as a parent, I want to know.
Like the one-on-one.
When my child's being pulled out.
Well, I think too.
To be supported.
How we do things here, I have been learning very much that how we do things here very much differs from how some other counties do them, so.
And they're saying they want to.
Um, they, the S B A supports the current opt-out system and opposes legislation that would mandate an opt-in system.
And opt-in, they don't want to.
So, they, they want it to stay as it is and not, and not change.
They're basically saying.
So right now, we're exciting for ourselves, which are opt-in, which are opt-out.
It's, it's harder to opt in than it is to opt out.
And there are some situations where, I agree, it is very much, you have some challenging situations where we can't reach parents and, um, but I think we're always going to have, we are always going to face those challenges, whether it's, you know, as long as we're doing our due diligence to try to reach them and help them during that school day, those hours that we're responsible for them.
I mean, I, I'm okay with skipping over this one. I don't think, I don't think I, I would be able to get anywhere near the number of votes from the V S B A to actually get any change done with this. So, I can just dig that on that side.
I mean, I understand what you're saying. I'm looking at it through the lens of Warren County Public Schools. I think we do a really good job of, even though we have.
Contacting our parents, communicating with them. And that's, to me, that is the most important, is just that we're continuing to do that no matter the situation, contacting those parents and, and working with them to support their kiddo during their school hour, so.
Yeah, because one of the first responses I give when a principal calls me and says, hey, you know, we have this crisis going on, um, my first response is, have you contacted the parent? And so, you know, their, their response is always, yes, we've got, we've got to call into the parent, parent is on their way. So, you know, that, that is always our first response, is to, to make that connection.
So the next one is, um, ten point sixteen, State School Health Advisory Committee. This one talks about the V S B A supports establishing the state whole, state school health advisory committee, lists what it, what's composed of, and then it says, the role of employees in public elementary or secondary schools in providing health and mental health services. And, then goes on to talk about the feasibility of requiring, of requiring school divisions to provide any additional proposed healthcare services. That's the one, that's the, the big slippery slope. I know we've discussed in the past the having, um, it feels like they want doctors' offices and, and hospital services to come into the schools. And, again, we are not northern Virginia, it's, um, where are we putting it in the building, first of all? Secondly, how are we handling HIPAA laws? How are we handling things like, um, you know, let's say your child has that, that doctor's visit, telehealth, um, at the school? The parent is excluded from that. And, um, the, the verbiage with the requiring school divisions, that, that takes away our ability to choose.
They're supposed to be against everything that requires us to do anything, like, that's the point.
Right, yes, it completely contradicts the parent stance.
So I think that's a good statement, like, it's.
And that's a good argument for why they shouldn't have it in there, that goes against their principle.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like, um, when the Lions Club would come and do the eye exams, and, you know, my first pair of glasses was from the Lions Club. So, you know, I don't know what, whether they send out a permission slip for that or not.
It's a dental program now.
The dental bus.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It's a dental program, but it's a permission. Yep.
But I think that's fine, they'd offer it.
And it's bus, it's coming to the school, it's not inside the school.
Not cost us.
You sign for it.
Right, yeah, yeah, when my, when my foster kids were in, um, this school, actually, we did the dental bus. Then the next one is the crime. It says that the S B A supports eliminating mandatory reporting of misdemeanors and status offenses by students to law enforcement for school-based incidents. And then it goes on to say, the S B A supports decriminalizing disorderly conduct for school-based offenses, which, I mean, I don't really think we should be charging kids with disorderly conduct for little things in the, in the school, but to at least have that option if it hit a certain level, um, is.
I don't, I don't even understand what that means, like, they're saying, like, we could have, like, a felony committed in school and it'd be okay for us to not tell the police?
Not felony, so felony is now mandatory, yes. But it eliminates mandatory reporting of misdemeanors. So, I don't know, I don't see schools as, like, crime reporting free zones.
No, and, and that's one thing that we tell our administrators, is, you know, if it's a violation of crime, you know, if it's a crime, then report it to the S R O. A lot of our, you know, in, in the high schools, you'll, you'll see vapes, that's one thing that may get, now, also with our S R Os, they will give them one, two, maybe three chances before they actually go file a charge. You know, they will, you know, they, we try to work with the kids, it's not an automatic, we're, we're charging you. There may be situations where it's, it's, here's your first chance, here's your second chance, okay, now we're here. So it's, you know, but it is reported, and I, I, I feel that, you know, if, if something does happen, we should have the availability to, or the ability to, report that and to, to be able to charge a student for, yeah, if you had a big fight at a school, I mean, that's disorderly conduct. And I think that, you know, in order to control that, there, there needs to be consequences for that.
Or like property destruction, potentially, that could be a situation, property destruction.
So I think for, for me, um, you know, we always tell our, I've always told my students, you know, for, there's, there's always a consequence for, for a bad action. And I think we need to have those consequences still available to us as a school division.
So what does that mean when they're saying decriminalizing disorderly conduct? Like, they would want to make it so we couldn't tell our S R O? What do they want?
Um, so to decriminalize it means that if the disorderly conduct occurred on school property, that it can't be criminally charged.
That we could not tell our S R O.
I mean, you could tell your S R O, they just.
But again, because we're making our own decisions. So no, that doesn't know.
And why would we have S R, I mean, like, we have a good relationship with the S R Os right now, and it sounds like, again, through our own Warren County lens, like, it's being worked through, that, okay, this is your first offense, we're going to have that conversation.
I mean, I don't, yeah, I don't think it should be mandated either way, we should be able to make judgment calls, and that's, again, what the V S B A says, there's their pull.
So should I just, at request that they just remove this section?
I would.
Just completely?
I don't.
Erase, just leave a space to do what we want to do.
If it is anything, it should be, felonies have to be reported, and we support misdemeanors, you know, schools using their discretion, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, I mean, the wording, yeah, would be just school discretion, but then you might as well take it out.
We support schools in what they choose.
Right.
For their district.
Schools can, can report misdemeanors or not, depending on what's appropriated, you know.
The way that this is written here, since the S B A supports eliminating, so it's, these, these are two different points. So it's ten, ten seventeen is the mandatory reporting of misdemeanors and status offenses. It says the S B A supports eliminating mandatory reporting of misdemeanors. So, is, is it current state law that we must report misdemeanors?
Don't think that it would be. I think, no, we have to do all felonies.
There's some sad stuff that's very illegal because you're under age, I think.
Oh, okay, with the vapes, okay, okay, okay.
So, but they want to eliminate mandatory reporting of misdemeanors? I feel like that's what we just said we want, so that's good, right? Yeah, we also don't want to have mandatory reporting of misdemeanors and status offenses, right?
I mean, I think that this.
Could be a lot.
Well, so, I think this portal should have to report it to the S R O, and the S R O then makes his judgment. Right, exactly. So what they're trying to say is that, like, if the teacher sees a child committing a misdemeanor in school, which, this came up with, like, the, with the Loudoun County thing, like, there are certain sexual offenses that are misdemeanors. And, the teacher then doesn't report it to the S R O, the teacher then maybe doesn't even call the parent of the perpetrator or the victim, you end up with, um, yeah.
Well, but they're going to be a mandated reporter of that anyway, right? I mean, that's, I mean, sexual abuse, like, that's already.
Sexual assault or something of that nature should go to D S S.
I don't know, I think I'm confused while we're.
I, me, I, I, I feel that we should have the flexibility as far as, you know, reporting those situations.
And working with our S R O, um.
Right, because we may, as administrators, have conversation after conversation after conversation with that, with that student. But, if you report that to the S R O, it may be that one conversation that changes that student's life going in a positive direction. And we are also, with our great relationship with the Warren County Sheriff's Office, you know, they're putting together a mentor program. And so, that's a piece of that, is, is, you know, when these are reported to them, hey, you're going to come visit with us for six to twelve sessions instead of us doing this or doing that.
And interventions. You're, you're putting in multiple layers of interventions before they're eighteen and out of the system, to help, you know, re-track that behavior, so.
Yeah.
So leave ten seventeen with the misdemeanors and then ask them to just remove ten eighteen, which, which prohibits, uh, the S B A supports decriminalizing disorderly conduct for school-based offenses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep. Here, oh, thank you.
We think that should fall into the same.
This is the one that would just remove it. Okay. And that's it?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing all that work.
Yeah, that's pretty thorough.
I guess to go back to your original questions of if we're staying with the V S B A and if we're staying with you, like, seeing this to the end, to be honest, I think this is probably the first time that anybody's really dove into any of these legislative positions, so, it'll be interesting if us doing this and prevent, and presenting it to them actually gets any response, and then I think it's worthwhile, probably, if we get.
So I feel like we have a voice.
Yeah.
Rather than not having a voice, it gives us a, an advocacy voice.
Let's see if they listen.
Well, it's too soon, that's one, say, it's too soon to know, is this going to make a difference or not? But thank you. Budget review?
Pass it around. So I will start off with, we're not, um, we have not finalized anything when it comes to our budget, because there's still a lot of questions out there. When you, when you look at the governor's budget, we do have that template, um, we do not have the template for the House or the Senate. Now, there's a document, we'll go over that document, those are Rob's projections on the templates, um, so we cannot, you know, that's not set in stone. Plus, crossovers happened. Uh, we, we are expecting that on the twenty-fifth, we should have kind of what came out of the conference.
At the state, or something.
Yes, and what we should really expect. What we've done is we've went in and we've looked at, of course, a five percent plus a step, um, for all employees, then we also look at a five percent plus a step for just teachers and instructional assistants and everybody else getting a five percent inclusive. Then we hear that there's talk about a seven percent, uh, so we are looking at, you know, we've, we've also ran numbers on a seven percent plus a step for teachers and instructional assistants, five percent for everybody else, uh, then also a seven percent inclusive with five percent inclusive with everybody else. So, there, there's a lot going on out there that we really, it's kind of hard to put something together because you, you don't know which.
Bonus and the one thousand dollar bonus.
One does have that, one percent, one that, yes. So, so if you open up your documents, um, these are just kind of the, you know, Rob's working on the proposals. Now, I do want to mention that the governor's budget also pulls out that six hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars that they said that was miscalculated, um, so that is removed from this. So if we get that back, then we would, of course, that would go back in, but right now, it is removed, so it's not included as far as the revenue there. You know, in our conversations, um, with the county, they told us to look at what we got last year, which was the twenty-seven, seven-twenty. And so, that is the number right now that we're, we're kind of using, but it's kind of hard to even get anywhere when you don't know where they're going to land on, one, is it a seven percent, is it going to be a six percent, is it a one percent bonus, is it a thousand dollar bonus? So, and of course, your budget, when, when your budget is really ninety percent salaries, it's really hard to, to sit here and say, okay, we're going to go this direction, that direction. So we've got a lot of ideas out here. Once you get through these first three sheets, and these, again, are just the proposed revenue sheets, the next sheet's kind of just outline where we're at, um, in those scenarios. So if you look at the top, Rob has on here, it's a, a step plus five percent plus the one percent bonus. So when all of that is ran, if you look down at the bottom right, that's the bottom number, sixty-three million, one thirty-five for if we go with step plus five percent increase plus a one percent bonus. On the next one.
And so, can I ask, before we go on, so we're comparing that to this grand total governor's proposal right now, that's kind of our best guess at the moment?
Or you can, you can, you can look at it from all three of them, from the governor, the Senate, and the House.
Okay.
So, yeah, yeah, so, so you can, you can kind of look at those, and again, those last two are Rob's.
Estimated.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. So the next one, you can see, grades one through six still get the five percent plus the step, but everybody else will get a five percent inclusive of the step, and that is a one percent bonus. So here's another scale, and, and again, on the bottom right, yeah, you can see that it dropped down to the sixty-two, eight ninety-six, which would be a, you know, a, a savings of, of approximately two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, um, when, when you average that out, if you do just the teachers, basically the teachers and the instructional assistants getting, keeping the five percent plus, but everybody else moving down to just a five percent inclusive.
Now, when you're saying grades one through six, you're talking about, like, the teachers' grade, not.
So, so let me, let me classify it. It's pay, it's pay grades, it's not classroom.
Okay.
So I better clarify that, I know I had that conversation with W C E A, so it's, it's the salary scale grade. So, we use grade, grade twenty-five, grade forty-six, grade, you know, thirty-two, um, that's how it's in our, in our, in our salary scale booklet, it's listed by grade, but it's not only teachers teaching, first through sixth grade.
I know, I was trying to make me know.
No, because W C E A asked me that question, um, in my meeting on Monday with them, and I did clarify, when we, when you hear us talk about grades, it's the grade, the grade scale, so, um, great question, though, and I'm glad you asked that.
Very important to clarify.
So that I can clarify that. So it would be every teacher on the sal, if they're salary skilled, grade classification, one, two, three, four, five, and then classification six is instructional assistance. Yes.
But it's not every employee, it's only those specific categories.
It would be only on, um, yes.
And that's based on if you have your bachelor's master's plus, and you're signing that. Yeah, I guess, I think.
Then the next sheet there is, of course, grades one, uh, one through six, that's a step plus a seven percent, um, then the balance of a five percent inclusive for everybody else, and then that includes the one percent bonus. And you can see that bottom, uh, number at the bottom, right down there.
I'm surprised that's only a little bit more than the first page, that plus five percent.
That's how.
That's pretty much in the same ballpark.
And then again, you have the seven inclusive, so taking that from a seven plus a step to seven inclusive, and keeping that a five percent. and keeping that a 5% plus a 1% bonus, the number is there at the bottom.
How do the teachers feel about having the newer ones have a accelerated pay scale versus the, you know, teachers with more experience?
As far as.
Like, what, how, what, what do they say about that? Are they good with that?
You mean like the 7% versus the 5%, right?
Right, 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 like giving the, the larger raises to the newer teachers.
Well, no, that goes to all teachers.
All teachers are in grades one through six?
Yes.
But like, I'm not sure what, but like maybe IAs are.
So, so when you think about, so, no, I, so, I, instructional systems are grade six. So that's everybody else outside of that, so when you look at administrators, like at Central Office, bus drivers, maintenance, you know, anybody that does, that does not fall within that, they.
Instructional assistant, that's what their grades are.
Oh, okay, thank you.
And then all these other ones are different numbers.
Gotcha.
Yes, that is great, thank you for pointing that out. If you look at the left down there, you can see one through five says teacher, six says instructional assistant, and then you can list head secretary, secretary, custodian, those are the other grade classifications that we have. So only those top two would be getting that percent increase. Everybody else from seven all the way down to 41 would only be receiving the 5% inclusive, looking at that.
And the teacher grades one through five is broken down like by what degree or like differential to training or anything like that?
So bachelors, bachelors plus, masters, yes, so that's where you get your grade levels, um, as far as one, two, three, four, and five.
Okay, not your actual step, okay.
Yeah. And then the next one, again, this one has the $1,000 bonus at the top, so you see that that's different than the 1%. So you're looking at the 7% inclusive, um, and then the, the $1,000 bonus. And actually, I believe the $1,000 bonus would cost us a little bit more than just the 1% on the, on their scales, so. So the next document you have here, this is on non-labor budget. So, um, looking at this, it breaks it down by cost manager. So when you look at this account over here where it says account manager, helmet, that would be Ressie Jeffries, Brutus L, Eve Wilson Morrison. And what we did here is we have their, their current budget. And what I asked principals to do this year was to look at their budget, review their budget, and then bring a proposal for what they need to do to align their budget, uh, for what their needs are. And so we broke that down to where you can see, for instance, at Ressie's, the current budget is $65,897 this year. When she brought me her revised budget, it jumped up to $68,988, so an increase of $3,091 to kind of align with where she is planning. And what I really want my cost managers to do is to kind of plan in the future for that year and say, okay, we want to get this done, this, these are the initiatives to meet our school-wide plans and make sure that we put funding towards those so that those initiatives get done and we're meeting the expectations. One of the things, there are a couple of areas that we need to discuss when we look at, uh, our non-labor budgets. So one of the things that we need to consider is virtual Virginia. So virtual Virginia is a cost that we have been paying out of cares. That is also something that, right now, we have built into the budget, but that will be an increase of $180,000.
An increase?
Like, that's okay.
Oh, because it's being paid in cares and now it's not, okay.
So, you know, that is, that is something that we need to consider, you know, are we going to move forward with virtual Virginia? Have.
How are the kids doing with it?
Well, I mean, there's, there's some that did not do well first semester, that we did not let them reapply, uh, to be a part of that. But what we did, so I asked, let's see here, yes, this is it. So I asked Ms. Bragg to kind of put some things together, so this back sheet here, uh, the first sheet is basically the program of studies update, that's gonna be something you're gonna receive, so you can review that, that'll be on the next, uh, on the march. But look at this second sheet here, I'll hand these out, this kind of gives you, I'm getting ready to hand it out. This will be the, the, so the number, we broke it down by school and then the total cost. So one of the things that we've had as far as with our frustration with virtual Virginia is that sometimes when students become idle, uh, maybe for three or four days, um, they're dropped.
After three or four days?
Yeah, that, they drop them, and then we have to call them, virtual Virginia drops them.
Well, that's a.
So, 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 so one of the concerns that, and one of the frustrations that our counselors have had is that it's kind of like it's not a partnership, it's more of a, this is what we're gonna do. And, and again, once we pay, once we pay that bill, so we have to pay upfront. And then if a student drops, you don't get that money back. Because they have to hire their teachers to cover those virtual classes.
Three or four days seems extreme, though, I mean, that's a stomach bug, you know, like, can they check in and say, like, hey, I'm sick?
So, so they could, they could, um, and, and so when looking at this, you know, is there a different solution that we could do or, you know, is, is the virtual component, I, I'm, I am a virtual, I like offering the virtual component, but I could tell you right now, it's been a struggle. Coming out of, coming out of COVID, trying to just deal with the stuff that we're dealing with, with mental health and, and other issues, this is just another added burden that, that counselors and administrators are, are having to deal with. But there have been multiple times where we've had students dropped, and the principal would have to go in and call them and say, hey, this, this is what happened, can you please re-enroll this student? Yes, and, and they would.
Does that happen pretty quickly, or is it?
I, I don't know, I would have to check, but, but they would re-enroll them. But it's, again, yes, we reach out, so it's not them calling the parent if the child's not attending, it's us calling the parent. So they will send our counselor notice, you know, Mr. Rinaldi did not attend class for the last five days, and you, and so it will be my job to reach out to Mr. Rinaldi's parents and say, hey, why isn't Ralph online? You know, so, so there's things that we're, we're having to deal with and work through that's, that's also an added.
That's an administrative.
Yeah.
Extra.
That, that you're not, that we didn't plan for.
Right.
And I will say that with virtual Virginia in the past, before we had a large group and you have one or two kids on it, it was a nice platform because those students really were motivated to, to do it, and so they did it. But I will tell you, we did line some things up, so I had, um, we put together the document that parents had to sign, that if they dropped, they were responsible for the cost of, uh, to reimburse us. We haven't had those issues like we did at the first part of the semester when we didn't have that. But what we also did was we looked through and said, okay, is this student being successful, or is this student being successful? And if they were not, when they sent in their application, we said, sorry.
Sure.
We're, we're not doing that. But we do have a total of, as you can see, 81 students that, that are in virtual Virginia. You know, how successful are they right now? I, I, I can't tell you that. I could ask each school to kind of get a report, but I think getting a report from virtual Virginia is even kind of difficult sometimes, it's bad. But, but I think they have, when they have great platform, they, you know, they do have a good product. But it's also, it takes a lot on that parent to make sure that their child is staying active and doing the work.
Okay. If y'all remember, I talked about a student who was really made progress in this virtual thing, and, um, I was talking with his grandmother, um, Saturday, and she said he has completed the ninth grade already. So to me, I said, that's great. However, I'm thinking in my mind, what's that kid doing now? Is he working on 10th grade stuff? You know, and she would not have known the answer to that, so I didn't get into a conversation with her. So my question is, when a kid finishes up early, like this particular boy, who's doing very well on it, by the way, does that mean that he starts working on 10th grade? What's gonna happen to him?
So they are registered for a class. So if that class is a semester-long class, or if that class is a year-long class, they're registered for that one class, which we pay for that class. And so if that student completes that class, if it's a year long and they complete it in March, we're not enrolling them or, you know, in, into another class, there's, there's two, two months left. Because then you have to pay, and plus, it's past their deadline.
Yeah.
So you have to meet within those deadlines also of, of enrolling into those classes. So the answer probably would be no, because if they finish those classes, and if you have those students that are, are really go-getters and, and you know, stay ahead and complete their work, if they complete a semester-long class by November at the start of the game, they're, they're done for that semester. Because you can't fit in another class within a two-month period there.
Sure. So what's this kid gonna do all day?
Well.
He's answering like a long.
Good question, because if he's doing.
And if he was doing online homeschool classes, he would start his next year and graduate early.
Now, I mean, is it realistic, like, I could see a couple of weeks early, is it realistic that kiddos could finish? I don't know, it's February, I'm thinking, is it realistic they could start in August and finish in October, or start in January and finish in, you know?
So it would also depend upon what grade level, yes, and what grade level this student is, um, because you have semester-long, you have year-long.
Gotcha.
And, and to finish virtual Virginia, they have the requirement that you have to log on to class. So to say that this student has finished, when there's still that requirement to log on, then it may be that they're dropped because they're not logging on and having that face-to-face interaction with the teacher.
They're gonna have to keep logging on after they've finished their course?
But I don't even know, I don't have to look into that.
Now, virtual Virginia is different than K-12, are you sure he's doing virtual Virginia and not K-12?
I think he's in virtual Virginia, but the grandmother didn't really know, and I, like I say, I didn't want to get into a conversation about it because she, I didn't want to put her on the spot either, you know?
I mean, the thing would be, would, you know, to, to, to maybe look and see where certain students are. And, and get a progress report, and I think the counselors get that progress report, so I'm sure that they get those updates.
So if a counselor gets a progress report that a certain kid has done, then what's their next step? What do they do, the counselor?
I'd have to look into that because I haven't had that report yet, that somebody has finished early.
Like I say, I just.
Is he in Warren County?
So, so those, so those would be conversations that we would have, if we're, we're right now, is there something else that we can do for that student? I can tell you right now, it would be too late to enroll them into another virtual Virginia class.
Sure, I understand.
They're past the deadline, so then what else could we do as a school system? Is there something that we could do that would be a, a work study for that student or something else that could take, take, you know, a credit for, you know? So we could work through some of those things, um, as, as a county.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that this boy is done, and this is the end of February, now he's done with the ninth grade. What do we do? Is he watching The Young and the Restless and General Hospital? I mean, come on.
Time starts back up.
Right, because he's six months old.
You are 77. That's what I, I think we're.
What are you, what are our options for virtual Virginia?
I guess I said, he, is he playing video games?
Turn on TikTok all day long. Yeah, what are, what are, what are choices here? What do you think we might want to consider?
I mean, there's, there's other programs that you can use, I know there's, um.
So that we could still get.
OK, it has the same setup, but I don't know what the cost of that is. There, there's just other online programs that you can be a part of, just like virtual Virginia.
Are you thinking we would want to get rid of an online option, or you think it would be valuable for us to keep it in some capacity, or?
I will be honest with you, I've always been a, a proponent of virtual and offering virtual.
As an option.
Options. But I will tell you right now, I'm on the fence. Because I have always pushed a virtual academy. Yeah, I started one of the first in Oklahoma, and I really wanted to reach out and, and to work with other, actually, it was, I started the virtual academy to actually reach out to our homeschool, uh, community, um, back in Oklahoma. And, um, so I am a big proponent of that, but I also see some of the downsides to it that it's almost as if we need some additional staff to help monitor some of the, some of the volume of things that are coming in from virtual Virginia and for these programs.
Is this costing us more per student than if we educated them in our classroom?
So.
$2,320 a student.
Yeah, and it ranges, um, yeah, so, so you're.
It's not equal across the board because of, maybe the classes and stuff.
Right, right. You may have some of these students that's only taking two virtual Virginia classes and two classes at Warren County High School. So for that student, we may only be paying $1,400 for that one, whereas in elementary, I think for elementary, it may be $3,500 for the full year.
Are these children still counted in the average daily format?
They are.
Okay.
Yes.
So this is on top of that price per pupil?
No, so we're getting, no, that's what we, so we receive for, and just say on average, and I'll just use round numbers, but say we receive $5,000. We're sending $3,500 of that to virtual Virginia.
Okay.
For elementary?
Yes, just as an example, or say it's $3,000, so, so out of that $5,000, that they're charging us $3,000, so that state aid then goes to, you know, helps to pay for that piece for that student. They are still, our student, we are still responsible, and they would still walk across the stage at a graduation.
But then that child's not taking up a seat inside of the school, so like this 81 children, I mean, it'd be helpful to know exactly how many are full-time and how many are part-time, but.
There's 67.
Okay, so there's 67 full-time, so we'd have an extra 67 desks to fill.
If they were in the system.
If they were in the school.
In the building.
Right. Pushing us closer to.
Spread out over all the schools.
And then we would still have administrative costs for those students.
Right.
If they didn't come to school or whatever.
Well, you absorb those, you absorb those a little easier in, you know, if they're in the school building, then you, then you absorb that extra out, out there outside, yes.
I think the key is gonna be finding a, a quality virtual option. I, I'm all for as many options as humanly possible, um, but hearing what you're talking about with the child who now is probably in a gap, so that's probably a teacher teaching live on virtual Virginia.
So virtual Virginia does have a teacher teaching live.
So, uh, my preferred online learning type curriculum is like my daughter's math curriculum. She logs on and watches the teacher teach the lesson, which is recorded, that teacher teaches one time.
Asynchronous.
Okay, and then if she has questions, she can, you know, like, type in and they'll try to give her help or whatnot, like there's someone there.
Yeah.
But, um, then if she finishes her math ahead of schedule, well, you just move right along to the next one. Right, exactly.
So they have an asynchronous option with virtual Virginia, but again, they're set on semester schedule for year-long schedule with those defined times when you can enroll into that class.
So does virtual Virginia work the way you just explained it, that they, they have one lesson and they watch that, and then they can move to the next lesson when they're done with that?
So most of the times they're.
Or they gotta wait till the next.
Well, they use Canvas, so most of their stuff is uploaded on Canvas, so, but there, there is a live component to it. But there is a live component to it. There is a live teacher with a Virginia-certified teacher that is teaching that course.
And it's not taped where somebody could go back and review it?
I'm not sure of that one. I think they're all live. But there is an asynchronous component. They just started that this year. And we did have, I know one elementary, I think it was an elementary parent asked for that asynchronous option. And so, even though we were in the middle of doing the, I guess, their normal option, we did go ahead and request for that student to go to the asynchronous, because that's what the parent asked for.
Well, I'll dig in some more as to why this, how this boy got through. And I'll dig it in, I'll go by and see, see her.
Well, and it sounds like it might be worth to just explore other options, you know, to see what else is available, obviously, too. We wanna make sure we still can provide them with those, you know, options, but.
But, and just remember, you know, we've covered this year with CARES money.
Right, because it's a price tag.
And CARES is now, now going. And so, so now, you know, is this gonna be something we're gonna have to make as part of our regular budget?
But what happens to those sixty-seven kids? Just, you know, like that.
Right, probably someone would stay with us and probably someone would ask.
I mean, I'm always open to providing what we need for, for the families. But I, I do know that our schools have struggled with connecting or the peace of working in a collaborative effort.
Well, maybe there's another platform that would be more.
I really get the idea.
A better collaboration and a more friendly or something.
Of the ones of these that are being successful, like, just taking it away, like.
All right.
I hate that idea.
I understand.
Like, maybe even if we don't do it, maybe grandfathering or something. But yeah, let's see what else is out there and.
Do we have a comparison for their SOL results compared to an in-school-building student as to a virtual learner?
So, some of them do well, some of them do not. So, that is one of the things that we take into consideration when those students want to enroll. We look at their, their last, their last SOL before, okay, are you, are you attending class? Are you on schedule? What was your SOL like? Those are, that's part of that criteria that we look at to make sure that, yes, this is a good applicant for a virtual program versus, hey, this student needs to be in school.
Well, that's on the selection of the student.
Right, that is in our selection.
Well, what about after the students end the program? Can we compare their success to kids that are in our building's success? That's, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah, so, so we get reports, you know, we get individual reports. So, as administrator, I can look and see, hey, Rob is online. You have, you know, you have a three fifty. Well, actually, I'll give you a four hundred. Because four hundred's passing.
Thank you very much.
Four hundred's passing.
I'm PE.
Yeah. You, you, you have a four hundred, you passed, you were, you were virtual. But hey, you know, Ms. Lowe over here, who was in class, you know.
She probably got a five hundred.
She got a five hundred.
So, watch it.
But, but no, and it could be the very opposite of that. A lot of times, students that work individually like that and thrive at it, you're gonna actually see their scores be a little bit higher, just because of that's who they are. So, that's, it's probably the reverse of that example we just gave. So.
I don't wanna take away a child's education opportunity.
Sure.
Looking for them.
This boy I know was failing in our school system. And now he's doing, according to his grandmother, doing excellent. He showed me his report card that first time I reported him. And I thought maybe, I asked him, is this too easy or what? You know, and he said, he said, I gotta work really hard. So, take it for what it's worth. So, yeah, it is, it is great for some kids to learn that.
Sure, yeah, sure.
So, also, the, some of the things I wanted to discuss, you know, we kinda had the presentation on our options for substitutes. You know, also in devising a budget, which direction do we want to go with, with everything? As far as looking at where we are right now versus where we need to be and what we're budgeting for. So, if you look at your budget document that I gave you there, that will be in there. I think you have to go to Mr. Goodwin's.
The utilities and substitutes forecast? Utilities and substitutes forecast?
So, so that's a different one. But if you go to Mr. Goodwin on this.
Oh, on the, on the labor class?
Yeah, because it would be listed under his cost center.
Okay, here we go.
What page, John?
I'm on page eight of seventeen.
Okay.
Is that the right page?
I think it's Goodwin.
It says Goodwin.
Is that the first?
But that's not it.
That's the second page.
But that's not it.
Is that a question?
Yeah, that's not, that's not it. So, you have to go to page nine.
Nine, other professional services.
Yeah. Page nine, up there at the top, Cost Center nine oh seven. So, you can see, this year, we were at six eighteen, and we actually had to throw in another hundred and some thousand dollars. So, we budgeted right now for next year, seven hundred and thirty-six. Now, if you look at Rob's sheet that he put together, that'll be the last sheet in your cost sheet here.
That's utilities and substitutes?
That's utilities and sub-sheet. So, when he looked, and what he did is he, he just kinda ran his cost estimate as saying, okay, here's where we are currently at this point in the year. This is what we've expended. If we finish out the year at the rate we're going, this is gonna be our expenditures. And here's my projection for next year. So, that's on the bottom, or that's on that last page on Rob's. Yeah, sorry. So, if you look at substitutes, current year is six ten. Right now, he's looking at a total of twenty-two of seven eighty-eight. That was an expenditure. Right now, we're at three oh five. And he's saying, he's projecting, he's saying, I think it's gonna be a little higher than the seven thirty-six as far as just with the number of absences that we're seeing. And that's like today, I know it was a beautiful day outside. I think our number was over a hundred, a hundred absences today.
How was Super Bowl Monday?
Um, I didn't check that, so. But that's a good question. Usually Mondays and Fridays are our highest days. You typically don't see a Wednesday as being that high.
Absences, you mean?
Yeah.
Are we communicating with our teachers right now that the absences are costing us a lot of money?
So, we, you know, we can have those conversations, we encourage that. But also, again, you know, I have always been a proponent of, you've earned your days. And if you're sick, I'm not gonna question you if you're sick. But if you're going to Florida for three weeks or for two days, I know you don't have vacation. I'm not allowing you to use your sick leave. You know, but I have to, you know, as, as, as an administrator, we, I trust when somebody says, I'm sick or I'm doing this. I'm not gonna question it until it becomes a habit. If I see every Friday, that's a pattern, then policy allows us to say, I need documentation. And we can ask for that documentation. But unless we see a pattern, we can't really ask for that. That's what policy says. And they're professionals, so we, we do talk about our budget, our sub-budget. And I think where Rob is getting a lot of his number is because we also have on the flip side, where we're paying those teachers that will come in and maybe sub for forty-five, we're paying them an hourly rate as well.
So, that would be included in this?
I believe that is included in Rob's number.
Gotcha, not just a sub, but what we're.
Right.
Gotcha.
So, I think right now, what we would do is probably stay with that seven thirty-six right now. Work on some things to try to incentivize.
Incentive for attendance for teachers is.
But then you're adding a whole nother.
I know, you gotta pay for it.
Another line item.
Well, you tell them, if you're sick, don't come in. And then when they abuse it, you know, you gotta, the administrator's gonna have to step in and do something. I saw it terrible at where I was.
So, when you also look at Rob's projections here, we do know that electric and he talked to, talked to the electric company. They're not going up, but we, we are projecting an increase in sewer. And since sewer and water is combined, he did a percentage of that. And so, that is included. And then he put that into the budget. So, that is reflected in this overall budget document here for the non-labor. So, when you look at his projections for electrical, he's saying, you know, we're, we were short. We're gonna be short next year fifty thousand. So, here's his projection. So, he's proposing one million four hundred and forty-one thousand for next year. When you look at heating services, he's projecting five hundred and twelve for next year. And then when you look at water and sewer.
Does the heating, like, with switching over with LFK to the new energy-efficient heating? Are we seeing any, well, maybe, maybe it's too early to project that, but.
Well, LFK hasn't been switched over.
Right, yeah, I know, but it's. Like, will these just continue to grow? Or do you think we're gonna see it maybe go back down because we're going more energy-efficient?
I like the warmer days, so you're not running the, the heat as much. You know, we, everything we have should be pretty energy-efficient now. But it's just also, I mean, you're looking at just cost increase everywhere.
Yeah.
And that's, that's the tough thing. This year alone, when we, so when we put in an additional seven percent for fuel, we've already blown through that, that and the seven percent this year alone in fuel costs. So, seven percent didn't even touch what we needed. And we thought seven percent increase was gonna be, was gonna get us through the year. And we're not, we're not there.
I'm looking at Mr. Mitchell's thing, and I don't see fuel, bus fuel on here.
So, maybe.
I see repair for bus and power equipment repair, but I don't see the fuel. Oh, here we go, vehicle power equipment fuels. So. It's. For twenty-three was two sixty-seven. And then, okay, I guess that's pretty reasonable. Okay. That was a big bite out of his budget was these increased fuels coming up, or what he's experiencing with it.
Yeah.
Okay.
And you'll be presenting some sort of initial proposed budget at our March meeting, right?
Crossing my fingers that we'll be finished with where we can get something. You know, it's, we're doing things a little bit different, doing this modified budget schedule and having the cost centers put down their actual costs of what they want. Looking at that, it's, it's taking, it's a while longer for them to work through everything. And then, of course, when you have four to five to six different options on just salaries, because you don't know which direction. Because I don't want to build a budget on a five percent plus a step, and then I find out next week it's seven percent.
Yeah.
And how does that affect us, or what are we gonna take out or add in? So, just.
Quick question, because there are some, some of these cost centers, there's some pretty huge increases. So, this is basically just the compilation of everything that was thrown out there.
This would be something that we will probably be going through.
And.
Finally.
Okay.
So, it's their wish list and.
Yeah, this is their wish list, basically. Okay, because there were some pretty huge increases that kinda caught my eye. And I'm like, I need to dig a little deeper, but that, and I get it. Let's, you know, shoot for the, shoot for the moon, I get it.
Yeah, this was just them putting us in, and then we just compared where they were.
This is the fancy version versus the, like, the, that one version we looked at in our budget meeting.
This is the, this is everybody's Porsche.
Gotcha.
And we may, we may need to back it down just a little bit.
Down to a.
To crow.
Way to crow, that's my first thought.
Or at least let's just use the Mustang. So, so looking at that.
Just wanted to confirm that.
So, so just thinking about where also, what direction kinda to lead into with our, with our substitutes. You know, are we gonna try to do this in-house? We gonna stay with ESS one more year? What, what direction are we kinda feeling?
I think no matter what we do, I'd like to see some incentives for not having such high absences.
I agree with that.
I think that, I mean, that is projected at what, one of Rob's numbers is close to a million dollars, but staying at that seven hundred-plus thousand for absences. I know it's another line item for you, but hopefully, we would, what we could save on substitutes, all of that's gonna be.
Yes, those would, those would be trade-offs.
And it's better for the students to have their teacher there instead of, so, I mean, we all know this stuff is.
It is, it is.
Not always the most valuable teaching day.
Well, I mean, there, it, it, it can break up a cycle and a rhythm. And, and the subs we have, they do a great job.
Right.
But keeping that cycle and that rhythm going to continue to progress, you know, that would.
Especially the teachers that's sick. I mean, they didn't, you can't plan for that day in your, like you say, in your unit to be out any, any given day. Like, they have to do a generic thing.
I was actually, funny that you mentioned that, because I was thinking on my way up here, I was just, again, as I was rolling things through in my head, thinking, okay, could we do just a, oh, sorry, a five hundred or a thousand-dollar bonus for whoever has, you know, everybody goes in at each school. If you have less than one day absent that month, you get thrown into a pot for a drawing. You know, something of that nature, just to incentivize.
We're doing it for the students. I mean, we'll push them to.
Rewards the ones who are already there. I'm sure the teachers will never take off.
Right. And I was thinking, okay, is there a way to, to do this to, and then I was thinking, all right, what would be the other side of that? You know, is this something that we, can I do something like that without having to offer it to every teacher or? Yeah, just, just working through some of those things, because I think it would be beneficial. And you're right, we do monthly attendance with our students, so why can't we do a monthly?
That's a lot of withdrawals, and I'm there. So, you're either in the pot or you're not in the pot. So, that might be a bridge for budget purposes of, we don't have to start. All this money to offer, but we have some small things to start offering. Yeah, to start and kinda build from there.
What is the difference between money-wise, between, say, step three and step four? Like, basically, like, five hundred bucks or something like that?
Are you talking teacher scale?
Yeah.
So, teacher scale, it's one, one point three percent between each step.
Okay.
Now, that's step, so that's going from, if you're on grade one, that's step five to step six.
Right, I understand. So. So, that's about, if I did my math right, that's about five hundred dollars on the average or so per step. So, if you offered an incentive plan for your good attendance, that you could skip a step and move in upward.
That would be hard to keep track of. Because then when you get somebody new in, they're like, oh, hey, why is so-and-so on step this instead of their years of experience? Because we base everything off the years of experience.
It should be bonus incentives, like every other profession.
I mean, yeah, if we, if we paid an incentive for attendance, it would cost us money, but it would also save us money if it worked. I mean, and if it didn't work, we wouldn't be paying it out very much, so. I mean, and if it didn't work, we wouldn't be paying it out very much, so.
Right.
It's not just cost.
And it would be a benefit to the students because they would see that their teacher is not absent and so it's important for them to be there because it's important.
Yeah, they know.
Teacher shows that it's important when they're there, the kids.
Teachers are gonna get sick and sometimes look out and that's fine, but it just seems to be excessive.
And kids know, they know, like, I mean, they know those kid, those teachers that are always there, don't miss a beat, you know.
If a teacher takes off Friday and comes back Monday and they've been playing golf and they're all sunburned.
So it's about seven hundred and forty dollars.
How much?
Seven forty.
Seven forty. So, in all seriousness, if, if you offered an incentive for good attendance and the incentive was you skip a, you skip a step moving upward, it would only cost you seven hundred and fifty dollars.
This year.
Huh?
This year, it'll perpetually
Yeah, right, and that's the incentive.
Well. Do teachers get to cash out their, their unused vacation days? They do, right?
Well, teachers don't give vacation days.
Okay.
Because they get the months.
Well, they get a personal.
They get sick and personal's closed.
Yes, yes, sick, yes, they do get the, yes, those are cashed out. Anything that's annual or, or sick, they do get to cash those out.
Every year?
No, not every year, no, no.
Just when.
When, when they leave, I guess, could, but. But so I was thinking about those things and, and we've had those discussions to see what else could we do, but I agree with you, we need to do some type of incentives.
Well, in reading the S D A legislative positions, they encourage local school divisions to have the free will to bonus and give awards and extra incentives as we see fit, so.
Look at us agreeing.
I see.
There'd be, maybe like, if we started like the idea of the monthly or something, maybe it could be like potentially, possibly, depending, you know, could it be at different grade levels even, or would that, you know, I, I don't know, to even make it a better opportunity, like elementary, middle and high. I mean, obviously, you're gonna have your larger numbers, I don't know, high school, you got a lot, though. Would that, I don't know if that would be an issue, you know, but if you did it by grade level, because like we do the attendance awards, elementary, so you have that.
You're talking about a whole school competition versus like just individual teachers, like their name gets to go in the draw.
I mean, just by like all elementary.
You're a lot more likely to get it if you get Warren County.
Yeah. So.
Depending upon school size.
That's what I mean, like you want it to be an equal.
Yeah, and in a situation like that, we'd probably pull A S Rhodes, Blue Ridge Tech and Diversified Minds together to make, make it equal to R C's.
You would do it by schools, not even.
Yeah, I was thinking by school.
I was thinking like every elementary, not every elementary, do it more, but, okay.
Yeah, I was thinking by school, so there'd be five hundred or a thousand at L F K every month. At Hilda.
And just make sure the pool is even, like you said, yeah, okay.
Make sure we have about the same number of, of, of staff members to, to offer that, I mean.
Well, I think, yeah, that's even, that's even better than doing like all elementary, all whole, um, middle or high.
Yeah, then you're looking at, um, what, we gotta be, uh, so you'd be looking additional probably eight thousand dollars a month times twelve. So eight, you, you would break that down instead of, if you combine Blue Ridge, A S Rhodes and Diversified, then you'd have the five elementary schools. So that's six, then the two high schools. So you're at eight, then the two middle schools, so, so you're ten. So that'd be a extra ten thousand a month, not eight, ten thousand.
Well, and what about your?
Oh, well, it'd only be ten months, so you're right, so you're looking at a hundred thousand dollars.
What about your maintenance and?
Um, we don't, so, so we don't.
I don't know.
Yeah, I would, I would focus on instruction.
Instruction, okay.
Because they don't really put subs in.
That's true, yeah.
Yeah, maintenance, maintenance, we don't, we don't put a sub in. They don't get a sub for me if I'm gone.
Should we ask the teachers what they would prefer as their incentive? Like, do you want to do this pool drawing to have like a big win or would you want some sort of incentive for, um, maybe a smaller incentive, but everybody who gets perfect attendance for the year gets something or whatnot? See whatever sparks their interest.
About that.
Might be, yeah, it'd be worth letting them have an, having them have an input.
I mean, maybe each building has their own thing. Yeah. Like it's, if we decide what money there is to be spent, maybe, I mean, the kids are That's how they're doing.
They're doing for the kids.
Yeah, let them take ownership of the program.
Say, here's your allotment.
Yeah.
And then you guys figure out what works in your building, what we wanna see.
Just the accountability and.
It's a good idea.
How are those you could report?
Yeah, it's delicious.
It is delicious.
So do you guys wanna take a break and, and take a snack? I mean.
Well, do you wanna finish up?
Actually, actually.
Yeah, we're still in the middle of the.
So, and I'm actually gonna skip the last one, so.
Do you, anything else on budget, though?
Um. I don't know if this is.
Anything else? And you wanna skip E all together for today? Okay. Then we will take a break, but do we wanna just go ahead and read into, go ahead and read us into closed, yeah. This motion is made that this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board become a closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, section two point two dash three seven one one. The school board desires to discuss the following matter in closed meeting. Section two point two dash three seven one one A one. Discussion, consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of employees at the school board, specifically the superintendent's evaluation and contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll do a roll call. Ms. Lowe.
Aye.
Mr. Rinaldi.
Aye.
Ms. Salins.
Aye.
Aye. Dr. Bunk.
Aye.
Okay, we're in closed session, but let's.